I'd like to call the December 6 financed meeting. You all have received the minutes of the September 4 meeting. Are there any corrections or revisions?
Thank you.
Motion to second to approve the minutes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. I have signed those, so those there. First up on the action item agenda, there are several transfers this time of year. We obviously have a lot of transfers. The first one, Debbie Berry appropriation for the election board, $750, and for the canvassing board, $375. Is there anyone here to speak on that, or does, I don't know anything specifically about this?
Was this an additional appropriation advertised as a public meeting?
So we need to have a public hearing.
Yeah, it's just, you know, they didn't used to pay. The previous auditor had chanted to pay only like twice a year, and those people weren't getting paid for like sanctuary or something for the election, so she wants us to put it back paying.
Well, I will open the meeting for public hearing. Is there anyone wanting to speak for or against the additional appropriation?
I'm going to close the public meeting.
Second.
Motion to second to close the public hearing, since there's nobody willing to, wanting to speak for or against it. All those in favor of closing the public meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing's closed. It's for Bobby, it's been properly advertised. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I agree, we approve the two requested appropriations from.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve the appropriation to the election board for $750 and to the canvassing board for $375. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to create a line item for the inmate care in the jail. The line item would be line item 33985. Sheriff, do you want to come forward, because transfers will be after this?
Are we creating this to put all these other things?
That's my question.
That's the one that we talked about workshop for holding inmates for capital charge.
That's right.
We approved the line item, we just didn't have the fund.
We didn't have the fund, so I make a motion that we create the line item. 00033985, 000380. Yeah.
Second. Motion by Beth, actually seconded by Gary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Line item is created. Now, the sheriff has some transfers. Review those, Randy.
Yeah, is there a particular, sure, is there a particular order you want me to go in, kind of follow along the agenda maybe?
Yeah, along the agenda would be fine.
I'll do that the best I can. So requesting a transfer from 22120 to 22150, which is equipment supplies for $1,800. This is to replace tablets that have been broken that our officers use in their daily duties.
We'll handle all of these as one, keep them under watch.
Yeah, perfect. Request a transfer from the uniform budget 22430 to, and this is broke down into a number of different amounts and, excuse me, line items, first being 22500 for $1,000, that's field equipment supplies. Part of that is for replacement, the balance of the replacement of a 20-year-old dart gun for the animal control. That order is pending this approval. The next line item is 33240 for communications and phone data. That is for part of the program that we use for policy management and training. This went up, and we have a change in the background investigation subscriptions, and that is paid out of communications and data fund, the transfer. That would be $1,000. The next transfer is to, out of that fund is to 33621, which is vehicle maintenance, $7,000, and that would be for the purchase of a fleet key management system. That's also pending this, this approval. I know Max had asked about, a little bit about what the key management system is, and that's something that will help us be more efficient in the management of our keys, which could be primarily used for our cool cars and other vehicles that we have, including our transport vehicles, which are in essence a cool vehicle. Plus, we'll have the ability to put in additional items like critical keys and other things like that, and it will all be tracked through the proxy system, so all of our staff have the proxy cards that are uniquely identified to them, and the only way to get these keys is for them to use their proxy cards, and we'll also be able to restrict what items they can get or can't get. So it will really be far, far more efficient for us to be able to do that and allow us to focus on other things instead of trying to figure out where some of these went and going with the honesty system, which has worked, but is taking a little bit of management. And on that particular sheet, that's, that's all the transfers for there. The next one is transfer from the youth services line item 33650 for $1,500 into the dues subscriptions and fees line item 33810. And that's for, and it was listed as policy management and training, but that is actually going to the, our scheduling software, for additional subscription for the use of our scheduling software, which, as you know, we run a very large department, over 115 employees and a 24-hour service that has minimum staffing requirements and so on, and it takes a tremendous amount to, of time to make sure that all of those requirements are met. This will also help us in the efficiency of management of that and reduce the amount of time that we're spending on that so we can focus on other things. Next transfer is from uniform, jail uniform line item 22430, $5,000 into 22290, which is other supplies, and that's for the replacement of a printer. That order is also pending this approval. The next one is 33360, which is inmate meals. The amount is $37,000, and that will be divided up into two areas, and this is to help pay for 33440, which is medical copay. Unfortunately, our population in our facility, the health is, we're seeing a decline in the overall health of the inmates that we have coming into our facility. And because of that, it's costing a little bit more on the copay for finding more people that are getting sent out to the hospital or needing specialized treatments, and that's causing the increase there.
Amy, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Just out of curiosity, you're taking that out of inmate meals. Are the number of inmates down, or are we just giving them peanut butter and jelly sandwiches? Or why are, why are we just?
No, actually, actually, we are down. Let me say, pre-COVID, we were holding about 310 to 330 inmates, and yesterday's count was 240. So we are down, and that has left us a little bit of extra money at the end of the year, which is, which is good. But unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, the health of those inmates that we do house have been decreasing. And then I'm also asking for 14,000 of that to be transferred into 33110, which is medical and dental testing. Again, for additional costs and for the additional cost of the dental, which was changed this year. And unfortunately, our dentists retired, and costs have increased. I've got two more to go. The next one is a transfer from, it's a 10,959, $3,000 out of that. 10,962, $22,500 from that one, and 1190, or 11900 rather, $25,500 out of that, and all of this be transferred into 13640, which is jail overtime. Total amount there is $51,000. Obviously, with staffing shortages and the increase of the transports that we've been required to do by statute, and the number of mental health transports that we've had, that's increased.
Jail overtime?
Yes, sir.
Overtime here.
And then the last one I have is also a transfer into that account. 12140 for $29,000, 12251 for $24,000, and 12253 for $27,900, for a total of $80,900 also going into the jail overtime fund for the same reason.
And this one, like the last one, the sheriff said, it's taking it from unbuilt positions into overtime.
That's correct. And I will note that in previous discussion, we ran that particular line item into the red, paying for that, but we had sufficient funding to cover that in a new salary.
So there are seven transfers. I'm not going to read them all back, we'll be here another 15, 20 minutes.
There's one number that was missing, number F. Number 11900 was left out right there by the $25,000 overtime on our paper. So we just need to include that number there.
Okay, and it is on the request for transfer.
Is it on that?
She, so.
We have all the paperwork that's required by the auditor's office to make plans.
We do, and we'll get all done, we'll pass them down to you. We have a motion on the sheriff's part of the transfers.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Gary, Kathy, you want to second?
I'll second, yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Commissioner Jeff Blaster again.
Good morning again. Few end-of-year transfers that we want you to take a look at. The first one is within the ARPA fund, and we want to, we need to pay for a highway truck. We had anticipated that that was going to come in next year. It's, it's in and ready to, ready to be picked up as soon as we can write them a check. There's, if we transfer $32,280 into the capital equipment line, our recommendation would be that it's transferred from the grant administrator line in the current ARPA budget. That will, that will give the total of $150,000 that we need to pay for that truck. That's letter A. Under B, we'd like to transfer $10,000 from the insurance appraisal line to the commissioner's contractual line. We were, as we, as we changed insurance providers this year, we were not required to do our own appraisal, pay for our own appraisal for, for the casualty lines of insurance. The insurance company actually brought their own people in to, to do that assessment. And so we've got money there in the insurance appraisals. Then we'd also like to transfer $2,000 from travel lodging and meals to our contractual line. We've got a number of things that, that were already in the red on our contractual line that, that we do routinely. We pay for the timekeeping system out of the contractual line item. We pay for all of the employment, drug screening, and background checks out of that, that line item on a routine basis. But then we're also paying Baker Tilly for their work on internal controls. And we do anticipate in the next couple of weeks having a draft of an internal control document that Baker Tilly is working with the auditor, the treasurer, the recorder, and, and the clerk on doing both internal control processes and for their own offices, but then also for the county as a whole. So those would, would both go into the contractual line. I might let you know that I had requested an increase for contractual for 2024, and you weren't able to do that, so we may have some issues with the 2024 budget. We have the same budget as we do for 2023.
Down to 2023, you'll find it, thanks.
We'll find it, we'll find it. And then finally, the, we want to transfer $1,708 from travel lodging and meals to the transfer station. We have a new contract this year, and the fees went up a little bit, and this should be available to, to cover that.
Okay, there are four transfers in the commissioner's budget.
Second.
Comments, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Next up, in court services, line item 33230, excuse me, 33950 in the proper services. Transfer of $150,000 from council contingency into court services. Line item 33040, $150,000.
We end up doing this every year, basically. They kind of run it in red, and she's figured out that that'll get them to the end of the year. And I also checked, and we have 300, over 300,000 in contingency, so.
No, let's just, since it's listed separately, Gary's motion?
I second.
Second by Max, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up, court services transfer, transfer 7,500 from line item 33011 per diem to 22470, reference books. We've got the documentation with that, and the amount of $7,500 if I didn't say it before. Motion on this. Motion to second to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is to create a line item for public defenders. Okay, yes, I apologize for that. We have another transfer in councils, contractual, professional, line item 33200 to court services, contractual, professional, 33200, in the amount of $18,350. The budgets for 2023 were completed prior to the hiring of a full-time guardian at Lightem. Position was approved by council and commissioners, but not additional funds were appropriated to time to cover this in the 2023 budget. Motion on this one.
Someone?
Second to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is to, a request for a new account is to create line item for public defenders fuel, line item 22445. Is there a motion on this?
I have a question. So is, is this for when the public defenders are coming and going as their investigator?
They hired an investigator, they have a car, transferred a car in for their use, but they don't have no fuel appropriation.
How are we funding this?
Well, Steve has offered to pay the fuel now out of, and is fuel fund, but for 2023.
Yeah, but what, how are we going to fund this in 2024?
My question is, this is supplemental public defenders fund. Could we not take it out of there, let them spend that money because there was quite a bit there? Why not use it out of there? But I can't remember off the top of my head if that's an item that would be, you know, that they could use it for. I'm just thinking maybe we should check into that.
Obviously, they've not requested funds yet to go in that council, they should consider that.
I'll make the motion to create line item 2245.
I think you can still create a line item for that, of course, the question just was, was the funding to fill that? And they could have some funds left in there on, but I, I'm like you, I don't remember if that's qualified or not.
Yeah, I can't, I just can't remember, it's been a while since I read all that.
Second motion.
Motion to second to approve, line item 22445, fuel in the public defenders budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next request is a transfer in funds in the 911 EMA department. Transfer from account 12310, communication specialist, the amount of $4,100 to account 13630, holiday pay. Most employees end up taking pay instead of comp time for holidays worked. We transferred 5,000 out of this account earlier this year to cover the overtime expenses.
Please for approval.
Second.
Motion to second to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a small transfer from the health department. The amount is $248.07 from line item 59700. I don't have a description of what that account is, but it's to go to, to go into fund 9151, which is the COVID testing. The account code is 00970. So it's a transfer from the health department into the COVID testing for $248.07, and they need to move this money to make old funds.
Tony, I can explain that a little bit. There was an error done back in 2021. It was actually just an error in the auditor's office. They pulled that amount out of the EMA fund that they had instead of the health department. Somebody caught that recently and changed it, but that fund, 9151, was a COVID testing that we fixed some of those earlier this year and got it back to zero. Then it was in the hole, 24807. And it's like, what happened? So they can fix it by just moving the money, and then, and then we're good.
Motion.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion to second to approve that transfer for the health department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I will let you know, the health department will have a few more transfers that they will have to us by, by the workshop. But because Amy and payroll wanted to get a lot of these done, we went ahead and just stuck that one in because they had it done and ready, but we will have a few more.
And I might just say, reason for so many transfers at the end of the year, line items run out, and so we have transfers from one line item to the other. There probably will be additional ones at workshop. And then I think something that we ought to do, I think we talked about it, but I'm not sure we voted on it. Typically, we authorize one or two council members to do the transfers that occur after the workshop so that everything's in the, in the black. We come back to you in the first meeting in January and report what those transfers are. And so I would like for you to authorize Beth and I to review at the end of the year any transfers that need to be made, to make those, and we will report those back at the January meeting.
They're, they're accepting claims this year until?
They are, that's a lot different than what's.
It's going to be very close for us to get those before.
They're approving them until when, Jeff?
Before the same day as your workshop.
Hopefully. There's people out of the office, and Debbie won't be back and things like that, so we'll just have to.
Since the auditor chose to leave earlier, I assume that you'll get a minutes to him, as well as Beth will sign these forms, and you can, for transfers. So I'll make the motion that authorizes Beth and Tony to make the changes and report back.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second for Beth and I to be authorized to make transfers at the end of the year and to report back on the January 3, 2024 meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else for the finance meeting this morning? If not, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For adjourn.